I would like to call this meeting to order for the city council meeting of February 1st, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and make your announcement about accessing the meeting?
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
King.
Yes. There you go. And then, Councilmember Waterfield.
President.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Here.
In order to expedite, or excuse me, in order to participate in the city council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under public comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID number 869-831-29149. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the raise hand button in Zoom. And if you are using a phone, please press star nine on the telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. The first item this evening is a proclamation, and Mr. Escobedo will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Today I have the pleasure of presenting the proclamation recognizing Black History Month. And whereas when Dr. Carter G. Woodson established Negro History Week in 1926, he loving extensively to establish Black History as a nationwide institution and to encourage the study of African-American history. And whereas the Black family offers a rich tapestry of images for exploring the African-American past and present and knows no single location since family reunions and genetic ancestry searches attest to the dispensary of family members across the state, nations, and continent. And whereas, as family historians dive into archives, online newspapers, and census reports to stretch the traditional boundaries of history, they discover amazing life stories of their ancestors, ordinary people who did extraordinary, extraordinary things, inspiring new generations and destroying all old stereotypes. And whereas, Black History has been at the cornerstone of contribution through the legacy of storytelling, history, literature, visual arts, film studies, sociology, science, anthropology, and social policy. And the theme for 2022 is Black Joy and Legacy Through Family Health and Safety, which focuses on those contributions and the prioritization of the health and safety of the Black community. And whereas, Black History Month reflects on the struggles of Black families while being a time to rejoin and celebrate their accomplishments, integrity, leadership, and determination, as well as to honor the history and progress that has been made in creating new opportunities for future generations. Here now, Allison Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize February 2022 as the Black History Month. And in the City of Santa Maria, I encourage all residents and businesses to acknowledge and celebrate with appropriate ceremonies and activity. And this proclamation, it's, uh, will be presented to LaWanda Lyons, who is the president of the NAACP, and somebody I really respect and admire for her work with the community. So, uh, and I, yeah, congratulations and, uh, thank you so much.
You, Councilman Escobedo, Mayor Patino, council members, thank you so much for the proclamation and good evening. Today, we rejoice. We rejoice because we are celebrating Black History Month. And you may think, well, what's all that fuss? What is the fuss about? I'm here to tell you that I grew up in rural Mississippi. And in rural Mississippi, there was no mention of Black people and their contributions. Only served, there was no mention of slavery, no mention of other Black people and some of the things that they had contributed. No mention of 14-year-old Emmett Till, who was lynched, the bombing of churches, and so on and so on. But we're here to rejoice. And we celebrate it. And, and you say, well, what's all the fuss? The fuss is because Dr. Carter G. Woodson, our father, the father of Black History, said, "If a race has no history, it stands in danger of being exterminated." So we celebrate because it's our history, we weren't in the history books, we are in the history books, but not to the degree that we should be in the history books. We celebrate not because we want to recognize and take a look at the harm that slavery, oppression, and racism has caused to people. That's not why we celebrate. We celebrate because this is our history. And as my friend Wendy says, Black history is American history 365 days of the year. And when we celebrate, we honor and remember the past, we celebrate the present, and we inspire the future. And, um, recognizing the, uh, the theme, Black family, Black joy and legacy through family health and safety, I have three people that I would just like to tell you a little bit about in the healthcare profession. The first one, I'm sure he's known to all of you, Dr. Robert Hammond, MD retired. He's a lifetime member of the NAACP. He enjoyed a 40-year career practice in medicine in Santa Maria. Was born in 1931 in Tampa, Florida. He received his bachelor's from Hampton University and was commissioned as an ROTC, Second Lieutenant with the United States Army Artillery in 1952. He was active duty from 1952 to 1955, serving in the 82nd Airborne Division as a First Lieutenant, Battery Commander, Seven Industry Division career. Awesome military service includes the US Army Medical Corps, where he was captain from 1961 to 1962. He passionately served our country for 10 years. He's a graduate of UCLA and Howard University School of Medicine. He completed his internship at Madigan General Hospital in Tacoma, Washington, did his residency at San Luis Obispo County Hospital. And then he began his medical practice in Santa Maria in 1963, retired in 2002. Dr. Hammond, um, was a member, fellow of the American Medical Association and active member, chairman, Division of Family Practice, Department of Medicine at Marion Medical Center, Santa Maria Chief of Staff at Valley Community Hospital. And he serves on the Democratic Club of Santa Maria Valley, serving since its inception in the adopter ruin. He and his wife Louise have five children, 10 grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren. He remains very active, providing seminars on healthy eating and ordering and giving away, giving away books on how not to die. He and his wife, they join us tonight. The next person is Dr. Albert Hawkins. He practices here in Santa Maria, and I'm sure he's known to many of you. Like so many talented professionals in our county, Dr. Hawkins' service in the Air Force brought him to Vandenberg Air Force Base, where he began his career as a physician after graduating from medical school in 1977. In 1984, Dr. Hawkins opened his practice in Santa Maria. He has held many offices, including Chief of Staff and Chief of Internal Medicine at KI Sawyer Air Force Base Hospital and Valley Community Hospital in Santa Maria, as well as Secretary of Treasuries Chairman of Quality Assurance and Chair of the Credentious Committee at Valley Medical Center. He has been involved with Marion Medical Center, is past Chief of Staff, Medical Director, Critical Pathway Development, as well as the Medical Director for Marion Medical Center Hospice and Home Care. Dr. Hawkins has been involved with the community by serving on SNCOW Board of Directors and Physicians Advisory Committee for SNCOW. He is board certified by the American Board of Internal Medicine, and he resides in Napa with his wife and enjoys life with his children and dogs. I love the part about the dogs thereafter my heart. The last one is Mrs. Charlotte Anderson, RN, retired. Mrs. Anderson spent most of her nursing career in Texas and was part of the Texas State Board of Nursing. In 2003, she turned it to Santa Maria to visit her son, daughter-in-law, and grandchildren, and has lived in Santa Maria every since. She immediately started work as an RN at Marion Medical Center. She is a member of Lifeway Bible Fellowship, Southern Baptist Church in Santa Maria, founder and CEO of Rising Achieve, a day ministry for boys and girls, is mother of two, grandmother to six, and one great-grandson. She served on the Executive Committee for many years, and is now now Executive Committee Emeritus. So, as I said, thank you. We rejoice. We rejoice and we celebrate. We thank you so much for this honor. We ask you to join us for a Black History Program on Saturday, February 19th, where we are partnering with the Santa Maria Public Library. That's Saturday the 19th at 3:00 PM outside on Labanino Plaza. We will still comply with all COVID measures in place, but we ask you to join us that day as we rejoice and continue to celebrate our history. Thank you so much for this honor.
Thank you, LaWanda, very well put. And thank you so much for reminding us of people in our community that have contributed so much. The next item this evening is a retirement resolution, and Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is with great pleasure that I get to introduce today's resolution in honor of our Senior Plans Examiner, Tom Jack, who is retiring. Whereas Tom Jack has been employed by and has faithfully served the City of Santa Maria for 18 years as a dedicated public servant, demonstrating professionalism and commitment to the building and safety profession. And whereas Tom Jack spent his 18-year career with the City of Santa Maria as a Building Inspector, Plans Examiner, and Senior Plans Examiner. And whereas Tom Jack has provided excellent customer service, service to residents, developers, business owners, and other industry professionals by providing clear information and sound guidance in a courteous manner. And whereas Tom Jack has played an important role in ensuring that construction development in Santa Maria meets state and local building and life safety standards, ensuring health and welfare for Santa Maria residents, business owners, and visitors. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria that Senior Plans Examiner, Tom Jack, is commended for his faithful and devoted service to the Santa Maria community, is congratulated on his retirement, and he and his family are wished good health and many years of happiness.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
That is, that is a motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution honoring Senior Plan Examiner, Tom Jack, for the years of service to Santa Maria. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto.
Hi.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Hi.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Hi.
Councilmember Cordero.
Hi.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Hi. And Tom, are you on the line?
Let's see, I don't see him under our panelist list, but there are numbers, uh, who are phone numbers. I'm looking first at, um, number ending in 309. Would this be Tom Jack? No. Number ending.
I can hear you.
Can you hear, is this Tom Jack?
Yeah, this is Tom Jack.
Oh, perfect, I picked the right line. Welcome.
Thank you.
Did you have a few words to say?
Yes, I want to thank Alex Rodriguez and Chen Ying for fostering a great work environment, and my coworkers for their great attitudes, the faith of a tremendous workload. They made it a pleasure to come to work and I'll miss them. That's all.
But you are, you are going to be so missed because though we don't see a lot of you out there, we know how, how important the work that you do and how intricate the work you do. It's when people like you are gone is when we decide we're really going to miss you. So, thank you for your years of service to Santa Maria. It is so much appreciated. Mr. Ring?
And you're welcome.
Did you want to, did you wish to say something?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. But it has been a privilege to have gotten to know, to work with Tom Jack. Understand that beyond his 18 years with the city, he spent many more years in the private construction industry for a total of 50 years of work. And Tom is leaving on a high note. Tom's last year was spent training our newer plans examiners, who will now have to take the reins and provide plan review for more complex assignments. But they're ready because Tom has provided the training. Tom is the glue in the building division. Tom sets the tone. Tom quietly establishes the teamwork culture for building division. Tom doesn't have to say much to set the tone. You can say it's because of what Tom doesn't say or do. He doesn't complain, he doesn't criticize, he doesn't exaggerate, he doesn't pretend. He's steady, he's calm, he has a sense of humor in kind of a sneaky way. In the end, he gets the job done. And so Tom will be truly, he'll truly be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. And happy retirement to you, Tom. Enjoy.
Thank you very much.
Yes, happy retirement. Thank you.
Next, we have the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. Before I read the criteria, I just want to give a reminder, since we are primarily in Zoom this evening, to, um, those interested in, in speaking during public comment, please raise your hand at this time. If you wish to speak during the public comment period in, in Zoom, if you're using a telephone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. And when you're called on, press star nine to unmute your telephone. This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on the matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. And before I move forward with our speakers, Madam Mayor, the Clerk's office received a few written communications, one from Diana Stevens, recognizing the achievements of former librarian Mary Houseall as a City Director of the Santa Maria Public Library and founder of the Library Foundation. And while this email was received following the last city council meeting, it was requested to be added as a public communication. We also received a communication from Latam Murty in support of Corazon Del Pueblo condemning a recent vandalism and alleged racial hatred. Ms. Murty also expressed appreciation for former librarian Mary Houseall and wished her well in her retirement. Janet Freckleton also expressed appreciation for former librarian Mary Houseall and said she hoped to work with her again in the future. Eileen Armijo wrote in seeking help establishing a rent stabilization ordinance for mobile home residents. Copies of these communications were provided to the city council and posted on the city's web pages. And Madam Mayor, and present in chambers who have requested to speak, we have four requests to speak, and currently we have one hand raised in our Zoom meeting portal. I'm sorry, now two. So, the first speaker in, in chambers this evening, we'll start with them, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, three minutes, is that correct?
That'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. Peggy Brierton, followed by Lynn Burkhardt.
Good evening, Mayor and council members via Zoom. My name is Peggy Brierton, and I'm a resident of Casa del Rio. Flaws in the 2019 model lease have been brought to the council's attention, yet you seem to remain uninterested. Maria from the city attorney's office was able to give me dates when stakeholder meetings were held in 2019. No record of attendees or minutes were available. According to this information, there were four meetings. However, I'm not clear if these were all of the meetings that were held. The stakeholders for the residents took their own notes and listed those in attendance. Stakeholders, including city staff, park owners, and resident representatives, and included attorneys for both the city and park owners. The people did not have legal representation at any time during the negotiations. This was a fundamental disadvantage for the people, and honest dealings with others in this case did not happen. Renegotiating with all stakeholders being legally represented should take place. Two, number one, correct the flaws in the 2019 model lease. And number two, negotiate the important elements that were dropped at the last minute. The people now have an attorney available to them. A second round of negotiations allows for the establishment of a key component missing from the first round, a level playing field. I respectfully request that the council reestablish stakeholder meetings with all parties legally represented. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lynn Burkhardt, followed by Gary Hall.
Hi, I'm a citizen of Santa Maria, and I'm just concerned that the mayor and the city council, uh, does not know what a fiduciary duty is. I know they took oaths because I've seen it on the website, but their due diligence is alarming. The amount of shootings that have gone on in the past two months is just unreal. The mayor hasn't, uh, spoke about it, hasn't done anything about it, just ignores the issues like always. I know our police officer out there on the streets working hard, I can see them, we can see them, what they're doing. Let's see. That $800,000 that was, that $800,000 that was left in the police department budget, I understand that it was, you couldn't hire people, it was a hard time hiring people, but you could have contracted services, you could have contracted security companies to secure our elderly, secure the homeless, all these different things you could have done, but instead you decided to bonus out the employees instead of keep us secure. I think that's a huge problem on, on your part. And I would really like to see, especially after what went on with Fregetti High School today, I'd really like to see the federal government come in here and, and take over the city because it's absolutely ridiculous. The crime is out of control. We have nobody to protect us. And you, you guys decide that to give out bonuses instead of protect the elderly or the people that need you? It's absurd. I've been here before, and I've told you this before, and nothing's changed, except for you just keep giving out money to places that it doesn't need to be spent. You need to take care of us, it's the taxpayers, it's our money. Do something about it, be better.
Our next speaker in the building is Gary Hall, followed by Mary Harrison.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Pointe of Mobile Estates, a 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team. I'm going to read you a list of California cities, see if you can guess what they have in common. Buellton, Camarillo, Carpinteria, Golita, Grover Beach, Lompoc, Morro Bay, Oxnard, Pismo Beach, San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, Santa Paula, Semin Valley, Thousand Oaks, Ventura. These are just the cities in Santa Barbara, Ventura, and San Luis Obispo counties that have mobile home space rent stabilization ordinances. Even the counties of Santa Barbara, Ventura, and San Luis Obispo all have mobile home space rent ordinances. They're not all perfect, and some are in need of improvement, but please be advised. They listen to the residents of those cities and unincorporated, unincorporated areas of those counties and try to provide those mobile home residents the protection they deserve. Unlike the mobile home residents in Santa Maria that were provided a flawed, purely voluntary, primarily park owner-designed model lease and the accompanying born-in-secrecy enforcement agreement, the mobile home residents in those jurisdictions have received real benefit. And still, the park owner enjoys fair rate of return. Oh, and that alleged degradation of mobile home parks due to the lack of maintenance just did not occur. That is just another scare tactic. Thousands of my fellow mobile homeowners and residents from several different Santa Maria parks have attended numerous past city council meetings. Many have poured their hearts out pleading to you for help. We are here again tonight in hopes that you will acknowledge our appeals and do the right thing by adding mobile home rent stabilization to the agenda of future meetings. It's time to fix and renegotiate the model lease and enforcement agreement or consider our or consider our proposed mobile home rent stabilization ordinance. The mobile home residents of Santa Maria need and deserve your help. You have a chance to protect mobile home space affordability. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Final speaker in chambers is Mary Harrison.
Thank you. And thank you, council, for your service. I do wonder that who you represent, that a city corporation answerable to stockholders or the oath you swore to take, which I'm sure says something like for the good of the people. This model lease isn't really helping to increase any affordable spaces in my park. People are paying $45 extra each month for a total of $540 a year. And with 209 parcels in my park, that's $112,860 that that particular park owner has made or corporation. There are 13 other parks in Santa Maria. So perhaps increases at those parks should be totaled also to see how many more spaces of affordable housing were added versus profit to a corporation owner of the park. I have two blind neighbors on my street, two doors either side of me. Now, although they are legally blind, they have enough light and dark vision that they are able to stay in these easy-to-care-for homes as they age. The visiting nurses and the physical therapists are kept very busy in an over-55 park. Greed is good was just a line in a 1980s movie. Who is running for mayor next? Please place a rent stabilization ordinance on the agenda. We do not need council members who vacillate one week. Therefore, the rent stabilization ordinance, the next month, they are not. Mr. Cordero, Mr. Escobedo, please live up to your oath of office. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor, council members, we have two members of the public on Zoom who have their hands raised. The first being Gail McNeely. Gail McNeely to speak during public comment.
Okay, sorry, I was muted. I apologize. Mayor and city council, you are probably all aware of a sign posted on city buildings that says, "Attention, masks are required inside city facilities." Tonight, I thank council members Soto, Escobedo, and Cordero for following those city rules in the council chamber since March of 2020. My next comments are meant for Mayor Patino and Councilmember Waterfield, who have not followed the city's directives and have not worn masks since March of 2020 in council chambers. Mayor and Councilmember Waterfield, leaders must never set rules for others, they refuse to follow themselves. Wearing a mask indoors means that you respect state, county, and city directives on how to be safe yourself and to keep those around you safe. Mr. Vanderkamp says the city follows all Cal OSHA protocols on the wearing of masks. Current OSHA rules say, per the California Department of Public Health statewide, masks are required indoors regardless of vaccination status. Has the mayor and council member Waterfield, have they followed these directives? No, not for two years. I looked at every city council meeting today, they have not. As leaders, what we do is more important than what we say. If our behavior is selfless, selfish, and thoughtless, that is the standard we set for others. True leadership is putting the needs of others before your own. Yes, we live in a free country, but we are not free to put others in danger of infection. To do that is thoughtless and harmful. It would be unfortunate if your actions led to your being infected by the virus. It would be criminal if your actions infected others. It is time to put your personal beliefs aside and to lead by example. Reassure the people who elected you that you are doing all you can to keep everyone in Santa Maria safe and healthy. Obey the directives of federal, state, and county government and those you have posted on your public buildings. Mayor and council members, you need to wear a mask. You need to wear it whenever you are in council chambers, whenever you are indoors. If you do not, your actions will speak louder than anything you might say to the citizens of Santa Maria. I hope you will think long and hard on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our final public comment speaker on Zoom this evening is Joseph Skoda.
Good evening, city council members and Mayor Patino. Joseph Skoda here, I know most of you, but I'm here to represent the Civil American Veterans, American Legion, VFW, all the veterans of Santa Maria that use the Santa Maria Veterans Memorial Building. Probably more important than that, I'm an Air Force veteran as well as a member of this community. I'm here in reference talking about the renovation project, Veteran Memorial Park renovation project, set to start here in the next couple of months, and how we're going to lose the street in front of the memorial building. You have in your plans to take away Pine Street, 501 and 503 North Pine Street, and that's the only parking that we have reserved for us American Legion members. Currently, we have seven spots there with two designated to handicap. And anyone who goes to El Camino School or comes around at 3:00 PM on school day, you'll see how packed, how packed the parking lot is with people trying to pick up their children. We're going to lose all of that parking, there's roughly 30 parking spots there. Not a lot of people use the park, some do, and we appreciate the renovations by bringing things up the code, putting the hometown heroes banners and other flags in the park. And it looks great, looks really great on paper. But taking away parking from veterans, many of us have disabilities, have trouble walking to the different functions we have going on. A lot of, I'm the commander of disabled American veterans, and my office is in back of the building. And you know that back door is not to be open to the public in most cases. How am I going to be able to see veterans and help them with their disabilities, with their claims, with a lot of other issues? How can our veterans who have problems walking already from the sidewalk into the front of the legion so they can attend our different readings and functions, how are they going to get by? Many of us pick up veterans from all over Santa Maria and drop them off and pick them up later, and now we don't have anywhere to even drop them off at. You're going to cause a lot of problems for all of us as the community that used that parking lot. All of it, and you too, the city uses it for blood drives or food drives and pickups. How are we going to find place to put parking? Maybe somebody had $2 million that set aside for this project, maybe build an underground garage like you do at the public library. We ask you respectively to reconsider resurfacing Pine Street and leave it as it is. In fact, even make the parking spots a little bit wider for veterans because taking it away is kind of a slap in the face for us veterans that use that building on a regular basis. Thank you very much, city council.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes any comments or any speakers that we have online at the time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we move on, Mr. Silwell, did you have any comments you wish to make?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, a couple of points. So we do continue to have our police department fully funded as adopted by the city council's budget. There is some savings, as we've identified in the quarterly reports, as a result of vacancies as people retire, move on. We do have staffing gaps, we are actively recruiting and retaining police officers, and remains a priority to do so. Regarding the Veterans Park, so one proposal is to, as the park is redone, to have a placeta in between the veterans' building and the park. But we will follow up with the American Legion and see how we can accommodate the parking at the spot as well. And I don't know if Alex, you have more on that, or that's good enough to just follow up for now? Or go ahead, Mr. Posada.
Thank you, Mr. Silwell. Yes, we have met with the American Legion, I'm not really sure where Mr. Skoda's comments are coming from. We have planned for parking, and the space in between the building and the park is actually designed to serve dual purposes, so we could use it for parking when it's not being used for a special event. So we have taken into consideration the needs of our fellow tenants that are in the building. And I think it'll all work out well. If Mr. Skoda has any questions, he's free to give me a holler, and I'd be happy to talk to him. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Okay, does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussions?
Madam Mayor, this is Mike Cordero, I do not have any items to pull.
Thank you.
I do not, and if no one else does, I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. And I have a second. Having heard the motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye. Next, we have a presentation, Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
City council will receive a presentation from the Recreation and Parks Department on the public art master plan and progress with arts projects to date.
So the staff report is to be made by Recreation and Parks Director, Mr. Posada.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to bring this information to you. You might recall back in 2019, we had a discussion about developing, sorry, adopting a citywide arts plan. That plan was adopted, and we were able to move forward since that time on some significant art projects. Tonight, I'd like to have interim Assistant Recreation and Parks Director, Mr. Smitherman, give his report on the progress so far, and then after his report, I'll wrap up. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening. I'm going to be sharing my screen with you. So I can get this presentation. There we go. Great. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for entertaining the public art master plan update this evening. We've had quite a busy year since the 2019 passing of the plan. In 2020, the plan was revised, and the commission committee formed of the Recreation and Parks Commissioners. And year one benchmarks were reviewed and implemented, working really hard to complete the task, which we'll discuss here in a second. In 2021, it's been really continuing with implementation for years two and three and really working toward the five-year goals of the master plan. Year one, the goals were really to get the plan out to the public and let them be aware of the concepts, the goals, the benchmarks that we had put together to look at solidifying the marketing and identity by getting it on our website, getting it up to social media, and really sharing with the public. We worked with the Recreation and Parks Commission to come up with a process for selecting public art. We also recruited additional members of the committee from the Recreation and Parks Commission and community volunteers. We looked at how to categorize public art within the city and really identify locations. And we're looking at continuing to develop a community-engaged planning process so that the public can be involved in the larger-scale public art pieces. 2021, fun year, challenging, but definitely the art has helped make things a little better. As you drive down the street and see a beautiful utility box or a new mural, we hope that it brings a smile to the community. We continue to create a plan to balance projects throughout the city. We're trying to be equitable in all aspects. We're looking to create some larger-scale pieces so they have a really strong outcome and represent the city. We're looking to commission public art from local artists using what's important to the community. We're looking at ways to have more than just single standalone pieces, as referenced in one of our newest pieces, The Valley of Light. We're looking to develop an educational program to increase capacity for local artists, and this includes working with our many, many partners, including the County Arts Commission, the Santa Maria Arts Council, working with schools and teachers, and so many other partners to develop a plan on how we can increase the capacity for local artists. And we have been working as part of the plan to create a database, not only for city use but for private entity use as well, or businesses. So artists may be able to be reached based on the skill set they have. We do have an artist database format out there since 2021, and we do have a list, a small list of artists, but as we continue to let artists know that this database is being developed, we hope to get more artists signing up to be a part of that. So today, we have really worked on, again, making sure everyone in the community is aware of the plan. And two of the projects we've done here with Rec and Parks and our GIS coordinator is creating a web map, let's hope this works. So what we have here, again, through our GIS department, have really created a map of all of the pieces that we have available in the community. Right now, we have catalogued, as I get to the end here, 38, 39 pieces of art. There are a couple that are missing, and we're hoping to get this updated. But what's great about this is-
I'm sorry, is there a way that we could put the meeting host screen on the share screen that you have?
I'm sorry.
If not, it's totally fine.
I think, Dennis, your link didn't, there we go. There we go, your link didn't pop up.
My, a little slow in here at my desk, sorry about that. Are you seeing it now?
Yeah, but, well, we got to share screen the meeting host screen. If we can, but if we can't, if we're set up how we are, that's fine.
I can stop, say, Rhonda.
Actually, Dennis, your link, if you pull up on your webpage.
Well, I will definitely send the link out so you can view it. But I know it's really tiny, but we do have 39 pieces of art catalogued in the city. The great thing about- The great thing about this story map, as it's called, is it does give an explanation of each piece, where it's located, and also the artist and the year it was completed. The other project we've started in 2021 is looking at future art locations. Sorry, Councilmember Soto, the same thing is going to happen. I apologize about that, but-
You just have to stop sharing that one screen and then pulling up your other screen.
Okay.
Yeah. So you go to your web browser page or, you know, stop sharing and then move over to your other screen to show your linked page. I think that's the part that we were missing. We're kind of following along in chambers and displaying what you were in chambers, so.
Look at that, right on top. So hopefully this will catch up in one second here. And I noticed on the meeting host, it's a different picture than what I'm seeing on my screen.
Yes.
Okay, well, I tried to go to the browser.
So yeah, if you stop sharing and then reshare your browser, you should be able to connect.
It's okay. You can send us the link at any time. If it's on the agenda, I don't see it on the agenda. Send it out. Okay.
There you go.
Hey.
There we go.
So I will tell you, this is the first map. And the second map, which just now popped up on meeting host, sorry about that, really is the same idea. It's looking at the city and really pinpointing different areas of the community that are lacking any sort of public art, identifying locations of potential public art, and categorizing what kind of art may look best there. These could be murals or sculptures or street art, tile work or signage, the variety of different ways we could do public art. We take recommendations from the community, from our commissioners, through just an email link that's available on that site. And of course, anyone could call the department and make those recommendations as well. We're just posting those locations on the map for review. And as projects become available, the commission committee is working really hard to spread those projects throughout the community. I'm gonna get out of this website. Now that you're back with me, are we on the PowerPoint?
I'm sorry, Dennis, what was that? There we go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience with that. We did practice.
We did practice. There you go.
Sorry about that. So as you see, both of those locations are available. We have them posted on the city webpage, as well as, again, anytime a new piece is added, we distribute through our social media sites, do news releases, and have opening, small opening ceremonies to share the public art with the community. In 2021, we were able to create four utility art boxes. This is, these were all privately sponsored by local businesses who help make these possible. We're lucky to have repeat sponsors. As we are on our third set of boxes, two of our sponsors have been with us since the beginning and see the importance in helping beautify the community. That's gonna be TriW Enterprises and BMLA. Both have been with this program since the start. And we really appreciate it. The boxes are probably the number-one thing I hear positive comments about in the community. Just people really appreciate the art that goes into them. Obviously, these are not the finished boxes, but we do have them available on the city map that I shared with you or tried to share with you a minute ago. Also in 2021, using stormwater funding, we were able to work with local artists to create these pieces of work, not only as art, but to remind people how important it is not to dump pollutants down the drain. These artists were great to work with. They spent an entire two days creating these very large pieces out in front of our library. So I hope you've had the opportunity to look at them. In 2021, just recently, we worked with the Santa Barbara County Arts Commission, the Office of Arts and Culture, the California Arts Council, and Allen Hancock College to create and install this piece created by Nancy Jo Ward. This was definitely a large-scale project. It was about two years in the making. The funding primarily came from the Santa Barbara County Arts Commission, 1%. A lot of the funding for this project was actually related to the jail project that was just recently built. Instead of putting art inside the fence of the jail, it was decided to move it to an area where a larger amount of the public could enjoy it. It's a great piece. And our most recent last piece for 2021 is this beautiful mural at Atkinson Community Center. This was in partnership with the Arts Fund, Santa Barbara, and Recreation and Parks Department. This is a teen opportunity that we've worked with the fund quite a few times to create these large-scale pieces, including the same group that also did the one at the Discovery Museum. There's one mural inside of the youth center, and this is the most recent. Our partnership, Recreation and Parks, really provides space and some supplies. But the artist and most of the supplies is paid by the Art Fund, which is a private 501(c)(3) foundation. So this page are projects that we're currently working on and they either have started or we anticipate starting in the next year or so. We have the mural at Jim May Park, which is funded by the Leadership Santa Maria Valley Group, who went out and raised money to create a mural that faces the 101 freeway, and that's currently being installed. We anticipate a large-scale mural, which will involve lots of community involvement, call to local artists, and really try to get the community to create a piece that represents Santa Maria. This mural would face Broadway on the old library wall. We have some new sculptures going in at Haggerman Sports Complex, very baseball-themed, but really to help motivate the public to recycle. McClellan Street Murals is a project that's just in concept right now and it's really to use the street and thermoplastic design as wayfinding so the public can find each of our local facilities a little easier. So for example, we have the flags and banners on the street poles. It would be the same concept, but instead it would be painted on the street. We have an art wall and sculpture that will be installed at Chapel Plaza when we break ground. This funding was made possible through the Prop 68 grant. That was included in the request, as well as at the Veterans Memorial Park. And not included on this list, but even most recently with the sports complex, art was built into that grant design. We're excited to be working with the Japanese Community Center people to create a sculpture that will be displayed at the Eno's property. We hope to continue with additional utility art boxes. We only have about fifty to go left in the city. And most excitedly and just learned last week is the Broadway Street Beautification Project, which will go from Cook to Main Street. And this was funded by Clean Air California and Caltrans. So this Caltrans project will include a lot of public input in the Art Committee to create a nice downtown stretch. And then potentially, we have a couple of projects that we're keeping our eye on. And if funding becomes available, the Battle Roads pedestrian and bike path, about, I want to say approximately two miles, mile and a half, of bike path that would be redesigned, make it more inviting, including appropriate seating and, you know, different amenities that you would find along a bike path. And this little section called the Carmen Triangle, that's what we call it in-house, that we're looking at on the website that, as property develops, we're gonna look at creating a nice focal piece there as well. For the next couple of years, and we've kind of got a little bit of a head start on this, we're working with the Chamber of Commerce to eventually find additional funding sources for public art. We do have a request out to the Tourism Marketing District to see if they're interested in using Santa Maria art as a great marketing opportunity and tool to get tourists here to Santa Maria. And then we're going to look at continuing to providing a venue where the community can meet. I think a lot of this can happen with Chapel Plaza and even the new Veterans Memorial Community Center. We'll have those opportunities. And then again, always looking for additional funding sources for public art.
Dennis, I was able to pull up, oh, I didn't have that one up. But I did pull up the story map. If you'd like me to share it and possibly you can go through that.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you, Rhonda.
Let me see if I can-
This is the one that I'm excited about because it has the most opportunity right now for input. And so, as Rhonda shares, it does take a second. I'm looking at a different screen, Rhonda.
You're looking at a different screen?
That's the main public art map.
That's not the one you want?
No. The meeting host is showing the one I was looking for.
The public art possibilities map?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, where can I find that one for you? Because I only-
It's okay. I'll definitely get the link out to everybody through the-
Okay. All right.
I appreciate the effort. Thank you so much for trying.
Matt has it over there, but I'm not sure unless, can you share it over there? Cancel my share. Stop here. I'm gonna stop sharing.
While we're looking for that, I wanted to share real quick, again, our Public Art Committee consists of two of the Recreation and Parks Commissioners currently, Anne Batterson and Commissioner Rebecca Carey. We also have Laura Henderson, who's a local elementary teacher and previous commissioner, who decided to stay on as this was a really important factor for her being a commissioner, as well as the Santa Maria Arts Council President Hannah Rubalcava. That's the core of the committee. We do work with other agencies during a time of art selection, which could include the County Arts Commission, the Santa Maria Arts Council. Our sponsors have helped decide as well for the utility art boxes. So the smaller-scale projects is focused generally with that group. The larger-scale projects will also go out for community review as well. And that process is identified in the plan that was submitted. Again, all of these, other than the Atkinson mural, where a small amount was used to help with supplies for those seven teens who got to learn from a professional mentor, and the Valley of Light sculpture installation, Rec and Parks helped create that little path that you see. The rest had to come from either private funding through grants or nonprofit organizations. So thanks for trying, Rhonda. I really appreciate that. And that's the end of my report. Happy to answer any questions.
It's a beautiful background there, Mr. Smitherman. Love it.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? I have one question. Where is the Battles Road Bike Path? Is that across from the post office?
I have the worst sense of direction, so Brett is on the screen here with us. I wanna put him on the spot.
Good evening. Yes, the Battles Road Bike Path is going to be south of the, on the south side of Battles Road, essentially going from Bradley all the way to Depot.
Thank you, Brett.
Where?
From Bradley on the south side of, so it's on the south side of Battles. Essentially, it runs from Bradley Road all the way over to Depot.
Oh, to Depot. Oh, okay. I just caught that last part. Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
You're welcome.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Well, first, thank you for the presentation. More than a, on a question, Major and fellow council members, as you already know, last city council meeting, we approved a couple of ARPA projects. And among those, we approved the construction of three pocket parks. And today after, we received these Santa Maria Arts Master Plan presentation. And I was thinking a way to bring these two ideas together and request support from the council. I would like to propose to dedicate a space in one of those pocket parks to recognize the huge contribution that the migrant community had put to the progress and develop of Santa Maria Valley. And this recognition could be a statue, a flag, you know. Many different ideas can be, we can put together a contest like what happened with the utility art box so our community can participate in design. And I'll be happy to support this project to make it happen. So yeah, that's something I would like to request support from the council.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Soto?
Yeah, I appreciate Mistress Goydell's comment and my full support. And I would also say that maybe this would also be a good time for us to revisit the fact that our city hall is named after a racist mayor who verbally outwardly said that we had a Mexican problem in the city of Santa Maria, Mayor Hobbs, at one point. And so I just would like to also voice my support for Mistress Goydell, but also mention that as we're uplifting the work of immigrant communities, also doing our due diligence to, you know, do reparations when possible. And then once we're, I don't know if this is now the best time for comments or so questions.
About the parks?
About the public, the presentation that we just received, would this be a good time for us to make a comment?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Another comment that I would also like to make is that I know that this item came before the council. I want to say last year when the master plan was, the Arts Master Plan was first presented and there was conversation about the city allocating funding through fees to be able to fund public art. And I would like for us as a council to revisit that conversation. It is evident that having public art brings communities together. It allows for there to be community buy-in and also gives us a sense of pride in our community. And it will be a way for us to also bring economic vitality into the community. And so that's something that I would like for us to also revisit if possible.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Councilmember, pardon me, Mayor Patino, could you just close up? If there are no other comments or questions?
I have a comment, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm a little confused here. I'm not sure what the, what one of the thing on Mayor Hobbs has to do with what we were discussing. That's another subject altogether. But I would be in favor of supporting anything that would have to, that would tend to bring a spotlight on who we are. It's, for me, it's not so much that we would be enhancing the immigrant worker. It's just that the immigrant worker is a part of Santa Maria. That's who we are. And to do something in one of our parks, whether it's a pocket park or anywhere else in the community, to show that we're recognizing a bit of who we actually are in this community. to show that we're recognizing a bit of who we actually are in this community, I think that's a plus for all of us. And if that means recognizing the immigrant worker in any way, shape, or form, then that so be that. But I think the more important thing is that if the public art tends to amplify the, the, the fabric, the makeup of the community, then, then we should celebrate that and do what we can to, 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 to send more of a message than just a statue or just a picture. I, I, I think that the, the public art should have a message, should say something. And I'm gonna, when we're, when we're done with this meeting next week sometime, I'm gonna talk to Mr. Watson regarding a, uh, uh, some public art that's over in the area where he's from and see if I can describe it to him. And we can get a name, a name on that artist, something that I saw while I was over in the San Joaquin Valley. But, but if your public art really makes a statement beyond just the display of a statue or a plaque or something, and it says something about, about the community, I, I think that's a major plus for us, and we should celebrate that regardless of, of what, what it is. And I think that Mr. Escobedo has, has come up with a, a good idea that we, we can all capitalize on and help to beautify our community.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, Eda Waterfield here, and there's a person out there, Lori Tamura, that is hoping to speak before we close this up.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna ask for comments from the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
Yes, as, as Councilmember Waterfield mentioned, she, excuse me, Lori Tamura is on the line to speak. She also submitted a written communication, but since she's available online, I'm gonna go ahead and let her address her communications, her written communication to you.
Thank you.
Lori?
Good evening. This is Lori Tamura.
Good evening.
Urban Planning Concepts and been involved in this process since the very beginning. And I appreciate the presentation that Dennis provided to the City Council. I'd like to make a procedural recommendation. Most jurisdictions now are requiring that staff post their presentation at the same time that the presentations go live to the public, because that's critical information that the public should see before the hearings happen. Most of the questions that were, that I had in my material, Dennis included in his presentation, and it would have been great to have seen that ahead of time. On the pieces that are missing in his presentation is how much money has the city Recreation and Parks Department collected over the last two and a half years? And where were the, where did that money come from? Whether it was grants or donations or sponsorships? I think that's critical budget information that the City Council and the public should know. I also want to make sure that projects, development projects like the Honda dealership and their public art that's facing the Bill Litten School is recognized as a donation to the city and part of the approval of the project. And also the great art that is on each overpass in the city of Santa Maria that was done by, through Bill Arndorf and S.B. Cag. All of those towers, those tiles should be recognized. I don't know if that's on the list. So, um, the other thing is while, while the presentation was going on, I went on to the city's website. I could not find any of this information on the county web, on the city's website. Um, so if this is gonna be, which I think is a, a very prominent project for the city, I think it should be on your homepage, so that people can see it right up front, rather than, I don't know where it's buried in the website. So, I continued to support the efforts that the city's staff has made. They acted on the direction of City Council to pursue outside funds and donations rather than tax the citizens to re, of the city of Santa Maria. And I think that effort should continue and not adopt any fee program that would hurt the homeowners of the city of Santa Maria. So, thank you very much, and congratulations to Parks and Brack for their efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Tamura. Madam Clerk, any other comments from the public?
No, Madam Mayor, and we have no requests to speak in-house and no others on Zoom.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Posada had a wrap-up comment.
Okay, Mr. Posada?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. I wanted to just take a minute to thank Dennis and the commissioners and the committee members that have worked on this project. You know, it's always tough to go out and ask for money. I want to thank Lori for her comments about, you know, seeing who the donors are. I think that's a really important item that we will include in our, in our future reports. Something I will go ahead and put together and post on the website and make sure our link is a little clearer. We'll work with Mr. Vandykamp on that. But again, it was, as you know, it was an extraordinary two years. And in those two years, we were actually able to get a significant amount of public art out there. I want to thank our donors. I want to thank the nonprofits, the service organizations that committed these funds. And we look forward to continuing the relationship and, you know, putting more art out there as much as we can get. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I know that's really important. I think that the art that we have in Santa Maria is very important. And I, I just, do we have a process by which we approve this? Because there's gonna get to a point where this is gonna be controversial. I can just see it coming. And so I, I don't know exactly what our process is right now.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the, in the art plan, the Recreation Parks Commission is the body that reviews, you know, the art. And so the Art Committee, that is a subcommittee of them, gathers that information and then makes recommendations. Should something become controversial, I think Mr. Smitherman kind of touched on that, you know, that there is a, there is a review process. Certainly, anytime you talk about public art, I'm sure the city attorney will back me up on this. It is a matter of opinion. And so we have to be very careful how we tread in those areas. However, we try to focus our art on beautification kinds of projects, you know, like the boxes, the utility boxes and those kinds of areas. Beautification in the parks, you know, that, that we've been doing some artwork in. I want to thank Councilmember Escobedo for bringing up the, the, the concept. We do include in our park projects art elements. We just worked with a couple of service organizations to get a new statue funded for the Veterans Memorial Renovation Project, honoring our vets. So there are those components that, that we work with. So I, I would like to try to keep, you know, as the controversy out of art, but it's kind of its own animal. So we'll, we'll try to do a good job of, of handling that for you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Oh, it's just Escobedo. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, well, first, thank you, Alex and Dennis for the presentation. I'm really excited. It's, it's a, it's a great thing that we're, we're putting up there good, great projects. And in regards to the, the, my suggestion, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm well aware that a good chunk of, of my constituents are supportive of, of it. And they're willing to, to come together and, and, and do, do something about it. I think it's a, I think it was a, it can be a way to, you know, we, we have certain places where we recognize the other communities and specifically, but this one, you know, just a migrant, so, because at the end of the day, we, we all, in a, in a way. So, so yeah, just want to stay in contact with you guys. Thank you for, to be councilmembers, and hopefully we can, we can make that a reality. I, I think that's a, we can, we can make something beautiful and at the same time, that recognize or who we are as a community, as a, as a Marie. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item will be a report by our city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the members of the City Council. The next meeting of the City Council is February fifteenth. We have another retirement resolution for retiring dispatcher Vonda Demore. And we'll have the fire strategic plan and the second quarter financial report. Also of note, we'll have a proposal to cancel the March first meeting. If you recall, last year, the City Council set four hearing dates for redistricting. And one hearing date fell off of our regular Tuesday agenda schedule, or Tuesday council meeting agenda, council meeting schedule. So the March first meeting will be moved to March second, Wednesday, March second. And we'll hold the, that'll be a meeting designated for redistricting. We'll have some maps available for the council and the public to review. We'll post them as soon as we have them. We anticipate having them and being able to post them sometime in February, you know, at least a week before the council meeting, for people to be able to review the maps and comment on, comment on them on March second. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So the next item is oral reports of council members. And let's see, Mr. Cordero, let's start with you.
Madam Mayor, may I go last, please? I, I think what I have to say, you're just gonna want to close the meeting on it.
Sure, absolutely. Then, uh, let's see, Mr. Escobedo?
No report for Waterfield.
Okay, Ms. Soto?
Hello?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to report, other than I'd like to see, discuss the mobile home park rent stabilization ordinance that, have it, just have a discussion about that at an upcoming city.
Okay, Mr. Escobedo?
Sorry, I'm, I'm having some issues with my microphone.
Okay, um, so I, I don't have all my stuff here. I am out. I am conducting this out of town. I want to thank everyone and their patience, since this is a little different with all of us here using our laptops and conducting meetings, but I guess it can be done. I, I did want to mention that both Ms. Waterfield and I attended the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning. And because we were very concerned about the Board of Supervisors and the Housing Authority allowing or wanting to have Motel Six for homeless. And we felt very strongly that this needed to be considered by our city and the residents in our city, and exactly how we were gonna strategize this and how it was gonna go. So it will be coming, it will be coming to our City Council, and, and that was what our intent, so thank you very much. Oh, and then Mr. Cordero, I almost forgot you. Well, Mr. Escobedo, did you want to say something?
Councilmember Cordero was muted.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
I, I'm gonna dispense with some of the things that I've done during this time. And I would like to give consideration to honoring a man that's some three thousand miles away. And that is Jason Rivera. Jason Rivera was one of the officers that was killed and in New York. And it's, he, he was a young man. He was twenty-two years old. And we need to remember people. And I, I hope that somehow or other, we can come together as a community nationwide and recognize how important it is that we support each other. And we can do that. It's just gonna take a lot of effort on the part of all of us. We haven't had that tragedy take place here in Santa Maria in a long, long time. And I've been to far too many of these in my career in law enforcement. And we need to remember that that was a senseless, a senseless loss of life. And I would like to say that from Santa Maria, we closing his name.
Mr. Cordero, I certainly appreciate that, because that is so important. Incidents like that do really impact our lives and, and the lives in all community, and that's so true. We really need to, to stay together. And it seems like this past year, people are just getting crankier and crankier. And, and not really caring about one another that much. So thank you very much for those words.
Okay.
Thank you. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Oh, Madam Mayor?
Oh.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I got, I got some issues with my, with my, with the, with the microphone. I apologize. Just, well, as a report, I just want to mention that I did attend to, it was a county supervisors meeting two sessions ago. I, as you already know, participated because there was a misunderstanding that the city of Santa Maria was not supporting of this project, and they had, and they had no knowledge of it. So I was really concerned about it. I would like to know, I, I, I wanted to know what is, you know, what, what, what there is about. I mean, whether or not to support this project is not something that was, I'm, I'm concerned, that concerns me. And what worries me is that decisions were made about the position of the city without being discussed or being brought to the City Council session. So I'm, I'm happy that that's gonna be brought to your future council meeting, so we can, we can discuss and hear from, from the community.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.